Good evening and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Public Library Board of Trustees. This is our September meeting, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to everyone who is here. We're missing a couple of members tonight. Melissa Bowie had a conflict with a child's school meeting, and Megan Griffin-Adams was called out of town for her work. But the rest of us are here. And welcome to all of you who are watching at home or wherever you are. We're happy to have you with us as well. We will begin with the approval of the minutes and the finance report. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Did anyone have any comments or corrections? Okay. Is there a motion to pass to approve the minutes?
I'm motioning.
Jennifer? Thank you. Second? Okay, Brett, thanks. And Naraj, would you like to walk us through the finance reports?
Yeah, sure. So this month is September. We're looking at, a lot of the stuff that we're looking at is August month end. So if we look at the monthly balance sheet, then, which is a snapshot of seeing how we're coming in on revenue or expenditure basis, our operating revenue balance is well within our budget. So we can move on to the gift and memorial fund. The gift and memorial fund, the threshold again is $140,000 right now. Current value is, current balance, total balance is 158,924, and that's largely unchanged from last month. If we move on to the monthly budget summary for September, again, we're looking at August. That's the seventh month or eighth month. So we're just looking at where we're coming in total through the year. The largest line item is real property taxes. That line item hasn't been populated yet, but I got an email from Bunny saying that they can populate it probably next month. We can look at the other smaller revenue items such as copies, interest, state aides. That's running below the run rate. Expense portion, everything's coming in line. Well, the largest component of the expenses is wages and salaries. That's coming in in line. The second largest controllable expenses is material. That's coming in at a favorable variance. Contractual expenses, that's also at a favorable variance. So in total, our expenses are favorable to budget. Wages are in line. And controllables are favorable. Again, the revenues that we budgeted is a little smaller than, significantly smaller than budgeted. Lastly, we should know that, looking at our checking accounts that we have, I wanted to point out that the total of liquid assets is dwindling, sort of. So when we're going, our next CD is maturing in December, late December. So I just want to remind everyone, we shouldn't just roll it over. We should think about kind of taking a good chunk of it and put it in checking. I think we should be fine from now until December, but just to let you know.
Okay. Are there any questions about the financial report? No? No comments? Would someone like to move that we approve the financial report? Judy, thank you. Second? Thank you, Rachel. We have public participation through this meeting being broadcast on Penfield Public Television, and also the meetings are posted on YouTube. And I gather people watch them. I've heard comments. So that is great. So we're glad that that's happening. Do we have any communications? Denise?
No, we don't.
Okay. Linda, would you like to give the town liaison report?
Sure. Tomorrow night's our unveiling of the budget for next year. Barbara Shirdo, our finance director, will be presenting the tentative budget. So that'll be, that'll be good. They'll start the process going for adoption in October. So if anybody has any questions about the budget or wants to hear more about it, you know, tomorrow night, tune in. And then there'll be a, following a public hearing a couple of weeks later. So, yeah, we have a legislative meeting with that, and then we have a work session as well tomorrow night. So it's a busy, busy evening for the town board. Do you have any questions about what's happening in the town? One thing, though, it just came out today as a news release, but you know, we have this CCA now, the Community Aggregate, to look at energy. You can opt out of having solar and so on as part of your energy. So anyway, there's going to be a public meeting on Monday, October 4th, here in the Town Hall by Good Energy, who's the one that we contracted with to coordinate for us, this whole program. So that should be really interesting because you get a real, you know, it's a back-and-forth conversation about what it all means. So that's Monday, October 4th, at 7:00 PM at the Town Hall. But if you have any questions, I can answer or bring back to you with an answer, let me know. Okay?
Any questions for Linda? Nope? Okay.
Thanks.
So we will move on to committee reports. And Naraj, do you want to bring us up to date on our expenses from the board?
Yes. I'd like to get the board's authorization to make payments for, a couple invoices for the Town of Parenton for badges, Plan Architecture for work to date, and a consultant.
Is there a motion? Denise?
Second?
Thank you, Jen. All in favor? Thank you. Rachel, do you have anything from personnel?
We had, this year, at the end of the year, two board members. Terms are coming up, and I spoke with both of those board members, and they both agreed to continue on for another term. So we're happy to have Brett and Melissa renewing their terms.
Yes. That is very good. Thank you for doing that. And Melissa is not here.
Barbara, before we go on, I have a couple of personnel, I'm sorry to move this so I can hear how loud I am. I have a couple of personnel things. We have a couple of people we'd like to bring onboard at the library. One is Mary Catherine Pietro-Pauli. We'd like to bring her on as a desk aide. And the other is Jacqueline Johnson, and we'd like to bring her on as a program aide.
Could you send a copy of their resumes?
Can I, did you ask me?
Would you please?
Yes.
Okay. I think that that is great, and I'm glad that you've been successful in finding people for those positions, Bunny. Can I just ask you, as long as we're talking about those positions, can you tell us what the difference is between a desk aide and a program aide?
The desk aide works the circulation desk. The program aide assists the programming librarians with preparation and conduct of programs.
Okay. Thank you.
So the program aide will assist multiple librarians?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
Strategic planning. We are in the process of receiving responses to our community survey, and we have more to send out. I found out that there is a limit to how many I can send out on one day on Google.
Oh.
I did not realize that, so I kept sending out lots and kept getting lots back. And finally, I figured out what my limit is. So I've got a couple more days. And thank you for reaching out, Jen, to the PTA. And if anyone who is watching would like to have a copy of the survey, please get in touch with the library, and they will be happy to give you the URL. I would tell you what it is, but mine just shows up as "Community Survey" on my computer because it's got the little title. But somebody that, who works for Bunny should be able to do that. And hopefully, next month, we will have our results. And we're going to use those to inform our conversations with Chris Lopez and his associate from Plan Architecture to see what kind of changes we might make to just freshen the library a little.
That's next month?
That would be next month. So. Megan is not here. She was, somebody left her work, and she had to go to Albany for three days. So we are going to put our bylaws policy on hold, or our policies on hold until next month to find out. Do we have anything with communications or advi? Okay. Well, that leads us to Bunny with the director's report. And I don't know if you wanted to talk about the CauseWave survey before you talk about your director's report, or if you wanted to, how you wanted to present that information.
I didn't really want to present any information on that. I just wanted to share it with you. We still have not gotten the Penfield portion of that survey. They were able to, people had to identify in the survey their home library, so they are able to sort out which responses came from which, which different service areas. So they're supposed to give us those particular responses, and they haven't distributed those yet.
Well, I hope when they do, it will be about the same time we get the results from our community survey, because I think the two surveys will dovetail nicely together.
I agree. Yes, I think so.
They'll, they asked very different questions, so I think that will be good. Well, then, without further ado, if you would like to walk us through the director's report, or would you like to just open it up for questions?
I'll just open it up for questions and comments.
Well, I had one. Actually, it's kind of two sides to the same thing. You mentioned that you and Julie Rapp interviewed several people for a position, the vacant program aide position. So I, there were two program aides.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
So we've hired one, and then there were several people who turned down the position.
Yes.
At the same time, it looks like there's been about a 25% turnover in staff since the beginning of the year. And I was wondering, what can we do to help the library be perceived as a really good place to work?
Well, I think you need to look at why people left. That had nothing to do with the library. It had everything to do with their going off to college, they're having another opportunity that they wanted to pursue. They weren't really leaving the library to leave the library. They were going someplace else, or going towards something else.
Okay.
Did any of the people that declined the position give any reason? I'm just curious.
They had, by the time we got around to offering the position to them, they had accepted another job.
Okay.
How long did the hiring process take?
Few weeks.
What is the salary range for that job?
I don't know right offhand. I don't have it memorized.
Okay. I just wondered, I would think that at some level, there are people, if they're looking for a job, and they, they want a job, that they, they don't have time to wait. You know, it's, it's a luxury that you have that they don't.
This was an unusually small pool. Ordinarily, we don't have this phenomenon. We usually offer it to somebody, and we get them to accept it. But it was such a small pool that they did have, apparently, they were juggling other opportunities simultaneously with interviewing for our position, and they just got the other opportunity before ours could conclude.
Well, I think we've, we've all read about the fact that it's very difficult to find employees now and so forth, and it sounds like that is coming home to the library as well, because I would have thought that those would be good jobs.
They ordinarily are. We usually have a very protracted interview period because we have so many people to get through. But in this case, it was, I'd say, about a quarter of the number that we were interviewing that we, we usually get.
Oh, my goodness.
Are these civil serv, excuse me. Are these civil service positions or not?
Yes. Every job in the library is a civil service position. It is a non-competitive civil service position, but it's civil service.
Okay. Just curious.
I did notice in your report, Bunny, that you have selected a young adult librarian to fill the position.
No, I wouldn't have said that in my report.
It says Julie and I have also selected a librarian to fill the vacant, young adult librarian position.
We are waiting for outcome from the town protocols to proceed.
Ah. Yeah, we, we've selected somebody. We just can't conclude the process until we go through all the required paperwork.
So how many open librarian positions are there right now?
One.
Just that one?
Yep.
How many open positions altogether?
One. Well, two. The librarian position, and I take that back. We had a page leave, so we have three.
Do you think you're going to have a problem with the town taking so long with this library, the young adult librarian?
No.
Bunny, can you review what the town protocols are to finalize an appointment?
Once we have determined somebody that we are interested in, we, the town requires a background check and a pre-employment medical procedure. We have no control over the timetable of that. So it's whenever that churns through and we get the results back, then we can proceed with the usual onboarding.
Okay.
But they've already received a formal offer?
No. We cannot make a formal offer until we get the results of the background check and the pre-employment medical.
But they understand that they, those are the two things that they have to get through before they'll get an offer?
Yes.
Okay.
Just so long as they know that that's?
Yeah, I send out, I send out a letter pointing that out. So yes, they're aware of that.
Okay.
This isn't just an observation. I was surprised in reading your report where it said more and more libraries are becoming vulnerable to ransomware attacks, and you were soon going to require each employee to have an individual login and password.
Yes.
And I was stunned. I have been working with, starting with word processors back in the 80s, through computers until I just retired. We have always had individual logins and passwords. I, I was so surprised that they were not, you mean, everybody in the library's been sharing one?
We have one login for our integrated library system, yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Not in the whole library system, at each library. There's one for each library.
Like one for Penfield?
Yes.
Wow. Oh, I know. I mean, I just, I saw that, and I thought, oh, my goodness, how can that be?
How does this implicate our budget? With the, with the change in Carl and the, I don't know, these, these first three bullets about, you know, the old apps and the new apps, and will that impact our technology budget in any way?
No. No, just a change in procedure at the providers, provider level.
Okay.
When that takes place, what are you planning on doing for, to inform the patrons?
When which part takes place?
When, when the switch is made from, you know?
You're talking about the Overdrive changes?
The Overdrive, Libby, all of this.
Yeah. There's a, we'll probably receive a publicity packet from the central library, from Monroe County Library System, to, to put up on all our communication vehicles, so that'll be on our website. They will probably, because the Monroe County Library System has a customized home base for Overdrive, they will probably have all kinds of publicity posted on that. So I'm not sure how they will get it out through the app, but I'm guessing maybe when you open up your app, there'll be something to alert you to the changes coming. People who have the Libby app won't care. People who have the Overdrive app are the ones we, we have to target. And we'll do the, the same things we always have. When we switched over from Overdrive to Libby, we did a publicity campaign for that, and probably implement pretty much the same procedures for that.
But Libby, Libby isn't compatible with new Macs. New Macintosh?
That's what we hear, yes. So they're, they have until February, Overdrive has until February to work like mad on that to make sure it's compatible with all patron devices.
Sounds like a thankless job.
Yeah.
They've got a lot of work to do.
Yes, I think so.
Yes.
You mentioned that the Bremen Room is now available for groups to book.
It is.
So that's a change in policy from before, right? So before they?
Well, not during COVID. We, of course, didn't have it open, but now we're?
Before, before COVID, it was available to book for groups as well?
Yes.
And you mentioned the, the Hearing Loss Association coming in to look at the Bremen Room in conjunction with the Americans with Disabilities Act.
Yes.
What about sight impairment? Is there, are there any provisions for that?
We do have Braille signage, but that's the only thing I can think of in the Bremen Room that would, that would address that. Of course, we have adaptive devices on all our public access computers, so it can talk to people. And we have keyboards that have the right, I'm not sure if it's called Braille or what it is that goes on the keyboards. And we have software built into the public access computers as well as the, I mean, the public catalogs, as well as the public access computers that can convert to speech for visually impaired.
I thought there was something. I just didn't want to leave out those people. You had mentioned that the Friends are building a page on the library. I thought there was a page on the library, on the library website for the Friends.
No.
There had been originally, wasn't there?
There was.
And what happened to it?
We were asked to remove it.
But I did see the Friends new brochure. I don't know if you've seen it. They had them out at the book sale, and they're very well done. They're like a trifold, and they address all the issues, what the, what the Friends do, what their money is used for, how it's processed. And so it's very well done. I don't know if you've seen them, but?
No, I haven't.
I should have brought some.
The town did a really wonderful job, Linda, in publicizing the book sale. That was really very well done. They gave it a lot of prominence, so that was a good thing.
We've also got some snazzy new digital graphics for the Friends, too. The brochure is very well done, but it maybe could take a little more design pizzazz.
Yeah, it has some white spots.
We've got some, we've got some new graphic software for them to use to maybe jazz it up a little bit.
Are there any other things going on with the Friends that this group ought to know about, Bunny?
No, I know they're planning to meet with Lisa Womat. I've spoken about her before. I can't remember if I included mention about her in this particular report, who has to do a webinar at the end of the month. But when she's done with that, she's going to be working very closely with them on some of their challenges of membership recruitment and reorganization. So that's, that's their next job, I think.
I don't know. Kathy Weber had mentioned to me that there was a meeting that we might want to go to.
She's, yeah, she's part of, going to be part of that meeting, too.
Yeah. Well, she asked me if I would go to.
Yeah, I know your name was on Lisa's list.
Good. So we'll look forward to figuring out how we can all work together and help strengthen the Friends organization.
We did get some nice news from PCTV. They, David mentioned that they would be happy to make some public service announcements to encourage membership in the Friends, that they would be broadcasting on PCTV.
That's great.
Oh, that's great.
Very nice.
Yes. That is wonderful.
I just wanted to say, I really like, I think it's an addition to this report that you haven't done in the past, the programs and development. I liked seeing that, what the librarians are working on for the future. So thank you for including that.
I also like knowing that there's two new streaming services. I happen to be on the website and saw the Crafty one and the Great Courses, which is an outstanding program.
Yes, we've, we've tried to buy, Great Courses are fairly expensive to buy in tangible form. We've tried to buy as many of those as we can. And we were thrilled when Overdrive brought out these new services that they're offering through Libby. And we were, we were very happy to see Great Courses on that list, so.
Yeah, they have some really good?
Yes, they do.
Really good, you know, opportunities.
Yes. Yeah, we'll see what kind of activity we get on those.
And the presenters are outstanding.
Yes.
I mean, that's what makes them so valuable.
And they've improved over time. They were always good, but the, the current crew that they have are very highly credentialed.
Yeah.
They're very good.
The one thing that I think we wanted to call out is Peggy O'Neil mentioned in her report that as a personal aside, she was celebrating 50 years as a librarian. And we want to say, congratulations, Peggy. That's quite a milestone, and we're very proud of. I know you had passed that milestone a couple of years ago.
Yes.
And we were not on TV at the time, but we did have a cake for Bunny. And it's, it really is a wonderful thing to be able to celebrate and to have somebody who has been that dedicated as a public servant for that long. So kudos to Peggy.
Absolutely.
And under new business, I'm sorry, I should, are you?
I'm all done, thanks.
One of the things, and I'm going to let Rachel talk about this, that she found in talking with Brett and Melissa about renewing their terms, was that perhaps they might like a different length of term. And so I'm going to let Rachel talk about that and present that as an idea.
Yeah. So in discussing it with both Brett and Melissa, they both said that they wanted to continue, but five years is a long time to look into the future. And as we saw, last year, we had two board members leave before their terms had reached the end. So I talked with Barbara about it, and we thought, in the past, we've discussed this, but maybe it was time to revisit our length of our terms. And we wanted to propose a three-year term. It gives you enough time to get into your position. You kind of know how things work, how roles that people have, but it's less daunting and a little bit easier for you to make that commitment that you will stay for the full three years. So we wanted to propose that. Is there any discussion about that portion?
Will the current board members, will they follow that?
Will the current board members, will they follow that, or will they serve till terms end?
You will serve until your term is up, and then-
Then that will come into play?
It'll come into play. It'll start with the terms that take effect on January 1st, 2022. But you have a five-year term, I have a five-year term, Jen and Rachel, we all have five-year terms. So we're going to do that.
The other portion was, we wanted to discuss if we should have term limits, if we should say, you know, you can serve three terms and then you need to step aside, or four terms. We can discuss the number, but if we have three-year terms, do we want to have people serving on the board for 20 years? I don't know. So it's kind of, I think that at some point, the community needs an opportunity to have new members in the board.
How do you all feel about that?
I think, I think in principle, I think it's a great idea to have term, term limits, just so then other people, just as Rachel was saying. I wasn't thinking about that, but I think that's a great idea, like people leaving and then the community gets a chance to participate, because if everyone just keeps renewing, then there's no chance. The other, the other thing, I wonder how hard it is to select board members, because when we've done that in the past, it sometimes is difficult to fill those positions. So as we have, if we had five-year terms, then again, it might not seem logical, but we're, we're having difficulty filling five-year renewals. When it's going to be three-year renewals, we're going to have to do it every year. And even though we're giving a chance to the community, what happens to the board if we can't fill it and all that stuff? So I think it can be overcome. I think we can kind of publicize it a little bit more, kind of let people, let the community know not just when there's an opening, but maybe the, something to kind of publicize where, put it on the radar. Because if people, if we're trying to fill it in January, and if all our publicity is around Thanksgiving and all that stuff, and get your application in within three weeks, then it's kind of hard.
Yeah, we, we did update that policy a year or two ago. We pushed everything-
A little-
A little earlier, trying to get applicants to apply in October, trying to beat the beginning of the holiday busy season. And I think that does help. I understand your point about having to fill terms more frequently. I do wonder if we would have more people interested if it's a shorter time commitment.
Yeah, I think, I think it might be. And also, why not change? I mean, like, let's see how it goes. I mean, like, what's the, what's the, I mean, if we have difficulty, we can revisit it at that time. But I, I think it's a great idea. I think five years is too much.
I think so, and I'm hoping that by being on public, on the Penfield Television and on YouTube, that people will see us and say, oh, I could do that. I'd like to be part of that group anyhow. We hope you're out there. And let's, Megan isn't here tonight, but we will ask her if she will prepare a draft resolution or a draft policy adjustment that changes the, the length of the term and also imposes term limits, and either three or four terms. That would be nine or 12 years, which I think is a lot. Because that would be-
I won't be here for 12 years.
No, no. And, and I, I don't think I will be either, but I just think that's, that's a long, that's a long time. And if we have a three-year term limit and you really want to be on the board, you could step away for a term and then be reappointed. We could probably, there could, there wouldn't be any harm in doing that. Or if somebody said, you know, I've served two years, I can't do anymore, and maybe wanted to come back in three years. Again, I don't think there's anything that would be opposed to that. So what do you think, three years, four years? Terms, I'm sorry, terms.
You know, the other boards, decision-making boards in the town all have three-year terms. So, I mean, it would just be in concert with what we have for zoning board and planning board.
Do you other, do the other town boards have term limits as well?
There's no term limits.
No term limits?
You know, the, the logic is that there's enough turnover, there's no need, I mean. But I totally agree with the three years. I think that's a, that's a good thing.
Good.
You also don't want to have a revolving door, so that-
You start over.
Yeah, you're starting over every three years.
Well, you don't want to lose knowledge.
Right.
Someone that's been there longer brings community connections. If we lost one of us, is really ingrained in the community, you might lose that connection. So that's something to consider, too.
That's, that's a huge thing, I think. I think when, sometimes when people have been on the board, sometimes that, the experience counts, too. So, and like what Lynda said, I think it's just human nature. People will just fall off the board and be-
Well, if somebody's on the board for three terms, that would be nine years. That's, that's-
That's a long time.
Yeah.
And you'd have new people coming in. We might have to look at staggering the terms a little differently, but that's, that's a technicality that we could work out.
Yeah, because you don't want to lose everyone at once.
Right.
Exactly.
Right.
Exactly. And I know, like, three of you came on at the beginning of this year, and you and Megan started at the same time. Rachel and I started at the same time. So it's-
But the three that came on last year, we had a one-year term, a three-year term, and a five-year term. So even that was staggered differently.
Yes.
So it might happen organically, a little bit.
It might.
Sign language.
I thought we were all five. I didn't realize that there was one.
It was just because two people had left prematurely.
I understand.
So someone needed to fulfill the end of their term.
That's why Brett was given the opportunity to sign up again and decided to do that. So that is, that is good.
Okay, so we can work on drafting up the adjustments to that policy and then have further discussion when that comes up.
Yes, so ideally, Megan will bring that policy or email it out to us before the meeting next month, and we can discuss it then, and then we can vote on it in January. Because our policy is that we, when a new policy is presented, we discuss it and we do not vote on it until the following meeting, just to make sure that everybody's on board and we're not ramming something through. So we will take care of that. The other thing that we're going to talk about under new business is the library is going to receive a check for $1,450 in memory of a son of Brett and his wife's who, who was lost. And we want to do something special, and I've talked to Brett and he's talked with his wife about what we can do with the money to create a memorial for Elliot Charles Holly. And I, he, he was, he was stillborn. And so we want to do something that has to do with babies and somehow, there was a suggestion made that when we do do renovations, one of the things that we might consider is having a mural painted in the children's area that would be especially appealing to There, there were some ideas of having some soft things for baby storytime that could then be, you know, washed, because they, babies are not neat. And Brett's wife suggested a rocking chair.
Oh, that's nice.
Which I thought was a wonderful idea.
I like rocking chairs.
And it is a significant amount of money, and we will probably have some left over to donate to the foundation. So this is a case where everybody is going to receive something, but we want to do this and then have a time where we can recognize you and your wife and say thank you. And take photos that you can share with your company for, for making this gift possible.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any thoughts on anything else we might want to consider, or?
Well, if you're, you're getting a rocking chair and for the room, another idea would be some, they have some of the large board books, so you can get maybe some of those also for the parents to read while they're rocking their baby in the room. Some of those are really nice and durable for the babies to be able to grasp onto and why not, so.
We do already have a rocking chair. Did we want a second one in the room?
Well, probably we do want a second one, and we would probably put a plaque on this one.
Yeah, I think so.
That would say, that would say in memory of Elliot Charles Holly.
Because I believe the first one's used during storytime, the, the individual telling a story sits in a rocking chair. So this way, if a mother needed an area to sit, they can also sit as well in a rocking chair. That was our thought.
That's very nice.
And Deanna is working with your organization. And it's, it's a, everything is a process, and it will work out and every, and it will come in. And I think we could look at different types of rocking chairs. I mean, are you, what are you thinking of? Are you thinking of like a wood rocker?
I would think so.
Well, I'm thinking-
What do we have now, Bunny? What kind of a rocking chair do we have now, Bunny?
A wooden one.
We have a wooden one? I'm just curious.
It's easy to clean.
Easy to clean, and I was thinking if we had a wooden one, maybe it could be painted white with like little blue trim on it and then have a brass plaque on it that we could, we could do. That could be nice, and I will see if I can find somebody who might be able to do a mural and get some samples from a couple of different people, so we can look at that. And then what is left after that, we could send to the foundation. Does everybody agree that that would be a good thing to do? Because I don't, I don't think we could spend all that money, as much as we'd like to, and but it would be nice to create something that's a really wonderful memorial. Well, thank you, and thank your wife, too. Okay. The one thing that's outstanding from previous meeting is, you know, we really want, as we get our community survey results and we combine those with the results from Causewave, we, we want to work with the architect and we want the firm to be able to get a feel for what the trustees would like to see, but the trustees are not the ones who are in the library every day. We would really like the staff to have comments. And in order for them to really understand the possibilities, they, I think, they really need to be out and look at some of the newer libraries around. The Children's Library in Greece, the Chi-Li Library, which is pretty amazing. It's a, it's a library, it's a community center, it's a senior center, it's meeting space, it's, it's really quite impressive. And if we can't do that, what are the ideas from those places that we could take? But I, I think it would be helpful, because if the staff is going to have input, I'd like them to be informed on what is possible and what current trends are. So I'd really like the staff to visit, and maybe they could do it, two going to Greece, two going to Chi-Li, two going to Aranda Quay, two Henrietta, wherever they could, but they, they go together and then they could share their, their thoughts with each other. So when we're meeting with Chris Lopez and the folks at Plan Architecture, we can contribute. And I know you said you mentioned that to the staff, but I think it needs, I think they really need to go.
They went today. Today was their visit to Henrietta. Their next visit is going to be to Chi-Li. I don't know when that, that's what they have, when they have that scheduled.
Oh, good. What did they think of Henrietta? Or did they go at the end of the day?
It wasn't a big surprise to them, because they had seen Henrietta before. They had a list of questions that they wanted to ask various staff members there, and they met with them, and the, the staff was very gracious and spent quite a bit of time with them. So they'll be writing up a report about that, that they'll be ready to share.
Oh, great, great. I just think it's so helpful, and I know some of us have made field trips to different libraries, just so we also can be informed and, and see what's there.
I think, I think board members are library lovers, and I think even us, to share some pros and cons, like in, like writing it out and just putting it out there somehow, so then the staff can see that as they're approaching the libraries to make note of, then it might be helpful even as they're going. So if the next one is like Henrietta, I would, I, I have a few things that I love about Henrietta, some things I love about Aranda Quay, Aranda Quay, the meeting spaces, the presentation areas, the, the technology that they've invested, gates, like the technology that they've invested, meeting space and all that stuff. And some of these things you can't see just by just walking in and everything. I think sometimes if there are features that other libraries that we've visited, if we've loved them, and if we're thinking about redoing our library, it's probably a good idea to share it somehow within the board and then to the staff.
Well, and I think sharing with the staff and having the staff share with the board. I think if we could share our opinions, so we're all-
Or if we know that they're going, if we know ahead of time that they're going to Henrietta or something like that, maybe that's a good opportunity for the, the staff and the board to kind of chime in, saying that, hey, if the board has had any favorable or unfavorable kind of features in any of these libraries, give them a heads up, so then when they go visit it, they'll have an eye towards that, those parts. Like, so then we know what the schedule is. Once you have made up, if certain staff are scheduled to go to different libraries, if you can let the board know, then maybe some of the board can kind of chime in.
Well, I think your, your first idea was really good, Niraj, of having people on the board do a summary of what they saw when they were there. I would be happy to write something up about my reactions to the Chi-Li library, just the library part of the building, but, because it was, it was quite impressive. And, and some of it, they had, they had space and, and so forth, and I don't know that we're going to be able to do that, but they had some very interesting things. And I know some people have been to Greece, like Denise, and, you know, if you can-
Yeah.
-write up a summary, and if you want to write up about Henrietta, and then we could share those. Give those to Bunny, so she can share them with the staff, and then when the staff does its findings, we can see those.
And that's something that we can do as a team and everything, and, and if we can, if we can have like a little flyer or something, so then when they go, even if they go informally, then they can look at our reaction, what we, what we enjoy.
Sounds like a good idea.
I just wanted to ask, are they, they're getting like a behind-the-scenes tour when they do this? Do you know?
Yes, they, and they're actually sitting down with the experts on the different areas they're interested in and talking to them about stuff, yes.
Great, because I want to make sure that they're also looking at things like, that they could put on a wish list for functionality. I mean, we want to look at it from both standpoints, as a patron, but also as an employee, so.
Yes, exactly. Yes, exactly. And if we could do ours and have something written up, perhaps by our next meeting, that we can share with Bunny, so she can share with the staff, so they see that this is something that we're involved into. So, I think that would be good. Now, we are ready for everybody's favorite part of the meeting, the claims payment and appointment of auditor.
Judy?
That is Judy.
That would be me, yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers for, the vouchers through September 21st for $17,942.48.
Is there a motion? Thank you, Denise. Second, Brett.
Okay, we also have, and, thank you, we also have an addendum there. We have to reapprove an error from the vouchers from August 17th, just due to a clerical error. So, instead of it being $12,081, it's really $11,875.16. Can we have a motion to approve that?
Jen, and Brett again. Okay.
Okay.
All in favor of approving those two motions? Okay, thank you. And Brett, you will be the auditor next time. It's, it's your turn. And then Judy, instead of being after Brett, it'll be Megan's turn.
It's fine.
Okay, thank you. I know, I know, this is like the, this is, you know, this is the hard part. Does anyone else have anything that you'd like to talk about, or questions? No? No?
Well, I just have a comment. I happened to work at the, the book sale on Friday, and it was very, very well organized and attended. And everybody was, you know, quite pleased, even though it was an abbreviated version. But it's interesting that when you wear the red apron, people come, that say Penfield Library, people come up and talk to you. So, they were, we had, I had, you know, several positive comments about this being the best book sale, people wait for it. And there were some disappointing comments, you know, why don't you have nonfiction, and why, you know, what happened to the cookbooks? So, but, but all in all, you know, the comments were very positive, and people were walking out with baskets and boxes of books. So, it was a nice feeling to see, and great books, oh my goodness. I walked out with a lot, so.
I walked out with more than I needed.
Yes, yeah. I'm supposed to be downsizing.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. But it was really, it was, it was well-attended, and it was nice to, it was nice.
And I think the Friends were very pleased. I think they, they received a, a lot of kudos also, and they had, I think, they definitely had enough volunteer help, so I think they were feeling better.
We had an issue with timing, because school's starting, and I couldn't get ahold of the person from the Friends, because it was like in between her summer, where, I don't know, I couldn't get, get in touch with her, and then I couldn't get in touch with the teacher to get the high schoolers there, so I'm glad that they, they took care of it.
Yeah, they did. And I'm pretty sure that the high schoolers came to box up things.
Oh, good, good.
Yes, they did.
So, I think, did they? Thanks, Bunny.
Oh, good, I'm glad. Okay, I wasn't sure about that.
I think it's usually one of the teams, isn't it?
Usually.
I don't know if it's softball or baseball, but I think it's, it's a team.
Yeah, they did a great job.
Does anybody else have anything to say?
Yep.
If not, is there a motion to adjourn? Niraj? And second, Rachel? Okay, all in favor of adjournment, raise your hand. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here, and thank you for watching.